Oh, Commissioner Singleton, we're going to get started now. That's all right. You all ready? Okay. Good afternoon and welcome to the Multnomah County Board of Commissioners' fifth budget work session. Audience members, I want to start by asking you to please silence your electronic devices. Commissioner Jones-Dixon is excused and Commissioner Singleton is virtual. For those presenting today, please turn your mic on when you begin speaking so that the red light, nope, the green light is showing and off when you completed your remarks so that the red light is showing. For all presenters, please state your name for the record before speaking or responding to questions. This is a follow-up work session that we have today for questions that we didn't have time to get to in our previous work sessions, and so I want to appreciate Dave Vasquez and his team for being, coming back and helping to go through some of the questions that we have today. So this has really opened up for board questions for the district attorney and his team. So Commissioner Singleton, I know you had some questions if you wanted to start off.
Thank you, and I also just want to appreciate you all coming back and making time so quickly so we could ask some questions. I had a couple of questions, and I've asked this of all departments. This first one, how was your equity manager involved in the budgeting process and decision-making for any priority, for any prioritization in your budget?
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, Vice Chair. Thank you for the questions in advance. It's very helpful to have them so we could sit down and kind of thoughtfully respond. And I'm very glad that this question came up. I was the Equity Officer of our union, the MCPA, before becoming a chief for four years, so this was a high-topic priority for me as well. And had we had more time on Tuesday to talk about it, I would have liked to have gotten into the weeds on this a little bit. The reality is that our Equity Officer had very little involvement because of the timing of our budget. We, we took, Nathan took office on 1/6, which is when we all started as the management team. We were not afforded a transition period or planning period. There was actually prohibitions in the office about the future team speaking with current management staff and employees, so we hit the grand running. And obviously, our first priorities were to keep the office afloat during a leadership transition. Our budget was due on 12/14. We started on 1/6. Our Chief of Staff started in his position on 1/17. And again, without that kind of lead-up that you get into a budget, we had very little time to make some pretty big decisions. What we did do was we focused a lot of our efforts on efficiencies in how we were spending the money and how we were organizing personnel in the office. So we did a lot of immediate restructure, which are reflected sort of in the treatment court unit and how we changed from horizontal to vertical prosecution. And after we had kind of those plans in place, I started attending community meetings with different leaders from different kind of sectors of the city as stakeholders to discuss with them what our budget priorities were and allow for questions and sort of more transparency into the things that we were prioritizing within this budget. We've also been having weekly management meetings where our entire team is presented with information about the budget, where our Equity Manager is and has an opportunity there to collaborate with us and talk about it. But really, I think this is a great opportunity for us in the future to be more sort of pragmatic and strategic in how we involve our entire management team in our budget priorities. When we have a final budget, if we need to be making decisions about resource allocation, we plan to have Maddie Girardi, who's our Equity Director, fully involved in that process to make sure that we're tracking any impact and that we're aware of any potential pitfalls that we may not be looking at without her in the room. So this is, again, an opportunity for us to kind of, moving forward, build in more time for that kind of collaboration. And it honestly wasn't as much collaboration as we had liked. Had we had the time to do it, we would have done more.
Thank you. I really appreciate that and the piece that you mentioned around it's not like one person, equity is not one person's responsibility, so thinking about how everyone's carrying that. Because of that, can you talk a little bit about how current and historical disparate negative impacts of the criminal justice system informed or impacted your budget decisions, considering the general fund realities that we're all dealing with?
Absolutely, and I think you, you'd phrase this in the questions you sent ahead of time in terms of the constraints that we selected for the office. Is that right, that framing? So what we really did was focus, again, in a very small period of time, on keeping the office functioning appropriately. So we focused on putting our constraints in places where we already had some vacancies due to personnel retention. We had a couple of people resign. So a lot of the consideration was where did we already have vacancies in unfilled seats? And it was sort of also a last-in, first-out kind of preference for newly-created positions, because once you have an attorney in a desk and they have a caseload, it's much harder to hand it off than something that you're just developing, just getting off of the ground. It's much easier to hand off. So we looked at sort of what had been added most recently, what are the newest programs, where do we already have vacancies? And we came up with that. And I will also ask you to notice that we did not offer up any non-attorney position constraints. We offered $100,000 in administrative costs that are non-personnel, because we have such a shortage of those positions already. So we really focused on kind of the attorney positions that were unfilled, because if we're dealing with constraint, we want to be avoiding personnel layoffs as much as possible.
Thank you. What percentage of resources allocated are directed toward alternatives to prosecution or restorative justice?
This is a really great question. This is kind of hard to parse out and break down. Every, basically every attorney in our office has some role in system diversion, whether that's referring cases for assessments like LSCMI's to figure out who's appropriate for supervision in the community, looking at kind of alternative sentencing structures where maybe a set of resentencing may be appropriate in a case. All of us sort of participate in that. We do participate in the restorative justice program. We're partnered with Multnomah Defenders and, sorry, Multnomah Public Defenders, and we're partnered also with, geez, it's Metro Public Defenders, I'm so sorry. And then we're also partnered with the Restorative Roots Project and formerly with Inside Alliance. So we provide that in kind. We don't actually receive any funding whatsoever for the restorative justice program, and it takes about two attorneys to run that program. Well, we've been running it with one, who's been me. So that's a supervisor-level position that we've dedicated to that work. And then we have, obviously, the task, which is an entire unit that's dedicated to prison diversion and treatment. We lead the state in juvenile accountability agreements. So our entire juvenile unit, which is, I believe, four attorneys, five attorneys, something like that, is working to divert juveniles out of the system with per-full-system diversions with accountability agreements. And like I said before, nearly every deputy in our office participates in programmatic diversion. So it's hard to sort of split out what percentage it is, because the answer is really it's a percentage of each employee.
Thank you. I'm not going to ask every question I sent you out loud. I think some of them are fine to send written follow-up, so I'll jump around a little bit here. Can you talk about the demographic makeup of your C-BAC and how do communities disproportionately impacted by the criminal justice system have influence and voice in your budget and policymaking process?
Happy to address that one. So part of it is that, you know, I don't have the ability to directly select C-BAC. There are folks that go through the process, and I know Adam certainly can help me with this, but that get forwarded on. We had a total of five members on our C-BAC. One was a BIPOC male, one white female, and then three white males. That's the demographic makeup. The way that that works is that, my understanding is that that gets forwarded, and Adam, you can help me with the name of that. It's the...
Good afternoon. Commissioners, Adam Brown, Chief of Staff for the District Attorney. Commissioner Singleton, I think you know that members to C-BACs are appointed through the Office of Community Involvement, so they apply there, and then they're ushered to our office based on their interest in, in public safety and the work that we do. So the composition of our C-BAC is based on, we, there's actually four of the members are new. The, the three white males and one white female are new members that came onboard in November, December, January. So the overall composition is relatively new, and we've been talking about this as a leadership team, that our interest going forward is in identifying diverse representation from the community, ushering them to the C-BAC appointment process, referring them to the Office of Community Involvement, and trying to populate a C-BAC that's as representative of the community as we want, given that our interest is in having a diverse range of voices there. And that's, we know that's how we get the best outcomes.
And then the last part of your question, I just want to take on it as well, is that, you know, since January, we have been very aggressive in reaching out to the community and speaking with lots of different groups. Those groups, for example, include, you know, the Latino Network, the Park Rose Rotary Club, the Park Rose Business District, which that one is made up of multiple, multiple minority-owned businesses, the Interfaith Peace and Action Collaborative, the Muslim Education Trust, and then the Long Kong Association, which includes multiple other associations in the Chinese-American community, primarily out in the 82nd area. So we've spent a lot of time out in the community, meeting with, with folks, talking about our budget, talking about their priorities, and that has been in just the few short months since we've taken office.
Thank you. I'll look forward to, I know that Amara Director has a lot of different ideas about recruitment for C-BACs, so I'll look forward to that work for your office as well. Can you talk about how many expungements have been worked on since January of '25? And how much has been, I know there was a backlog, so curious how much has been of that backlog has been dealt with?
Yes, we've, our JIU, our Justice Integrity Unit, has processed 3,155 motions to set aside convictions, or what we call expungements, between January 1st of this year and April 30th of this year. And between this January 1st and May 13th of this year, they've completed 77 819 petition reviews.
Thank you. This came up during, when you all were here for a Budmod, I want to say a month ago. There was some conversation about community outreach, and so I'm curious what community-based organizations, your MAPS DDA's are currently located.
So again, another really good question I'm happy to answer. We are currently housed in, within the Rosewood Initiative. We have stable office hours, and we had before, our Old Town Deputy resigned in that program, or that position shifted into a new employee. We were also housed at TPI here in downtown, and we would regularly go to Bud Clark Commons, too. We had early conversations with the Blanche Hay House about potentially hosting hours. I think we were very close to figuring out what the timing of that would be, what would be kind of the best fit for everybody involved. We also had conversations with several other CBOs throughout the county, where we ended up landing was actually finding it much easier to coordinate within the county, so we have a lot of office hours at local libraries. So we were at the St. John's Library. We've looked into the Kenton Library. The St. John's Library being under construction kind of put a whole, hold on those office hours, but our attorney, Alex Garcia, has been hosting remote office hours and going around to businesses and leaving his card and setting up Zoom meetings essentially with community members until he finds a better place to land, because the Kenton Library turned out to be too far from the district. We've also looked at some church space that was offered to us in the Elliot neighborhood that didn't really feel like the community was accessing enough for it to be worth putting somebody in there for four hours at a time. And we've, I'm trying to think of the places in Rockwood we've looked, we've looked at. There was an offer to be housed inside of an apartment building, but it was too restrictive to people that didn't live in that building, so we were, we're still looking at the Rockwood Library for steady office hours.
And Commissioner, I'll just add that, you know, we, we got the list of questions from the board on Wednesday night. We're working on the comprehensive written responses. There will be further details on all the engagements from that team. They're working on that now. Our approach today was, we don't want to send, you know, half-baked list of responses to all the questions. We want our response to be comprehensive, so we're here to support, you know, whatever questions come in the moment, have that dialogue with you, but then just know that we will follow up with a more comprehensive response when we, when we get everything done.
Yeah, that's great. I totally appreciate that. And this is what I would have asked you the other day if we had, had the time, so I know some of it may come as, as written follow-up. On the MAPS program, I do, I would be interested in further conversation offline about the community-based engagements. I think I've had, coming from running a number of CBOs, had some really successful partnerships with office hours of many different types of services, and so I would love to follow up and just support you getting into some spaces that I think may, may be beneficial.
That would be fantastic. We'd be very grateful for that partnership.
And we would welcome that partnership and are always happy to find ways to integrate and work throughout the community.
Excuse me. With, sorry, I'm going to shift over to your Strategic Prosecution and Services Unit. I just, I couldn't quite figure out from the program offer, where, where do you get the data for that program?
So we typically, right now, we're using our own...
Could you move the microphone a little closer? Sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Right now, we're using our own internal access to Regen, which is the, kind of the warehouse for police reports, to use that data, because that, Regen also tracks noncriminal police reports. So when officers are going out on any kind of medical-related calls, like an overdose or a call for any kind of medical service, or when they're responding to a welfare check or something of that nature, it also populates within that system. So we've been relying on that. Previously, we had, I believe we had an MOU with Portland where we were using their Tableau system, which gave us much broader access to the city's data. That's since sort of expired and hasn't come back online since COVID.
Do you have a preference of the data? Are you comfortable with what you have, or is that something you want to further explore with the city?
We absolutely want to further explore that with the city. We are always looking for, you know, the, the old kind of axiom of bad data in is bad data out is very important to us, so we want as much data as we can get to make sure that when we cross-reference things, we're being accurate. And one of the things we ran into with our early usage of Tableau was that we were trying to reverse engineer our searches to make sure that the algorithm was correct for what we were trying to look for, and we were getting different results. So it was difficult in partnership with a Tableau that was being built at the time and what we were trying to use it for. It created a little bit of tension in that process, so we ended up relying solely on one data set, but that's not our preference.
And we've also recently, just this past year, due to the investment of the board, which we greatly appreciate, we came online with what we call our PBK system. That's our new case management system, so it has the ability to include a lot more data, and we're able to, to use that. But that just started this last year, so we're hopeful to start using the data out of that to help us better refine that information, because those are all cases that have been submitted to our office. So that's where those come from. And it's really our belief that through the combination of, of using those multiple data systems, we're able to get towards the best results.
Thank you. So it sounds like the contacts aren't just criminal contacts, but there's room for improvement in where you may get some of that data.
Absolutely.
Is that right? Okay.
Yeah.
Do, is there a list of people that are kept that are referred to as the high-system utilizers?
So our, it's, it's actually kind of a complicated question, because our, we don't really have a list, per se. What we have is a dynamic data set that changes as we interact with it. So we don't have a static list of people. Once you're identified and once we've intervened, you're moved off of the list after a certain amount of time without an unplanned system contact. So, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I read into, what I kind of inferred from your questions was this general concern over, like, are we putting people on lists? And how are these lists being managed? And absolutely, there's a ton of historical context, and that concern was very present in my mind as we were developing the MAPS program, and also present with Nathan as he was working to develop strategic prosecution as a unit. So we've dedicated ourselves to not keeping static lists of people before adjudication. We track our outcomes after, so we have lists of conviction, and we keep those rates, but we don't have just kind of a static list of frequent flyers. We, we, we use different criteria to filter a dynamic data set, so depending on what we're looking for, the list will be different. The data set will appear different.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and that's exactly right. There's, I think, particular history in Portland around some of these types of lists that get created.
That's why we were so careful to not have a static list.
Thank you. Just in the Justice Integrity Unit, it mentions expungements and outcomes, but there's no narrative about it in the program offer. Could you talk a little bit more about just what you expect to see that unit doing?
Certainly, you know, that unit will continue to, it has a host of different duties, but certainly it'll continue to do the expungements. That's a key component of that. We are continuing to review the SB 819 petitions. There are additionally just a host of different types that come in, you know, from time to time. It's, the Governor's Office will, will forward, you know, requests for commutations, things of that nature. So that's, that's going to be that unit's responsibilities. Additionally, as part of the restructuring, the unit is helping with the arraignment courts, and so they're, they're also have taken that on. So there's just really a, a broad range of responsibilities that they have.
And Commissioner, I'll just add that it, it's helpful to point out that you were looking through our program offer narrative. You know there's a core function that this unit performs, yet you didn't see anything about it in the narrative, right? You, you know that building program offer narratives and all the effort that goes into writing the program descriptions, it's a heavy lift, and it's easy, you know, for your eyes to get blurry and for you to miss something that otherwise should be there. So it's good to have that outside reflection of, hey, I know you do this work, why don't I see that reflected there? I appreciate that feedback, and we'll make sure to update that for fiscal year 2027.
You and I went through program offer nightmare for the joint office, so we both know they're never going to come out perfect, but I appreciate the lens to next year as well, and did just want to make sure, because I know that's in there, I think it's in the outcomes there, too, so wanted to make sure. We just chatted about it a little bit. I know this is a hard question, you may not know, but just curious, because there's been funding traditionally from the city of Portland, and curious what your thoughts are, how things are going around potential funding from the city, from the state, and/or from the feds for the DA's office work.
Well, I appreciate that question. There's a, there's a lot in there. I can certainly address the city component pretty, pretty directly. With the city, I would say that it's going well. We have continued to have very good conversations around the positions that they have traditionally funded in our investigators unit. They, they had a hearing just, I believe it was either yesterday or day before, I apologize, my, my days do blend a bit, but in that hearing, they were being asked, and the chief was being asked about specifically the positions that they have funded, and they, they seemed to be very committed to continue that funding, and that's, that is certainly my hope and expectation, is that we'll see that. Some of that is tied to the overall agreement around the, the auto-theft task force and the organized retail theft, so, you know, they're watching all of that closely, but, you know, we've had good conversations. It's been a good cooperative relationship with them, and they, they continue to express their, their desire and interest in continuing. So I, I see that as, as still very on track and positive. Of course, I think your guess is as good as mine with the new 12 commissioners and how they're going to interact with that budget, so there's, there is that. But in listening to the, to the hearing, I, I walked away feeling very positive. How about that? That's, that's the best way I can answer that one. The state is, you know, I'm watching that closely. The revenue forecast came out yesterday, and it was not positive. So how that's going to then translate and trickle down into everything from the, you know, deflection center funding to the, the, the MCJR-P funding, to the various other grants that they do, that, that, I think we're still waiting to kind of see exactly how that comes out. You know, my office does receive some direct funds for the, for the MCJR-P program, so that's certainly of concern, something we're watching closely. And the federal government, it's, it's a everyday struggle. You know, we're, we're certainly writing letters of support for our community partners that are direct recipients of federal funds. We are concerned about our VOKA funding is a, is a big issue for us. That, that's an area that is, that funds our victim advocates, so it's an area that we are watching closely as things develop. And I would say I, I am very concerned about the funding in that area.
Thank you. Yeah, I know you don't have a crystal ball, so I appreciate some of that lens, just because you're closer to this funding. In multiple program offers, I've noticed a significant increase in internal services. Is this just due to the restructuring, or I wasn't clear on what was happening there, because there was nothing in the explanation of section on those program offers?
Yeah, you're exactly right. We actually had a year-over-year decrease overall in internal service costs. So for fiscal year 2025, it was about 4.9 million, and for fiscal year 2026, it'll be about 4.7. And so the, the overall year-over-year decrease is primarily due to the change in allocation methodology for facilities allocated costs that reduce our, our overall facilities cost by about $300,000. But otherwise, the year-over-year changes you see are a result of the reorganization.
Thank you. During the budget presentation, there was some discussion about failure-to-appear rates for defendants, and I'm curious what the failure-to-appear rate is for law enforcement, just to put it in some context of if they're comparable.
I assume by that you mean like when an officer fails to appear for either grand jury or for trial? I'll say the numbers are not comparable. It's much, much lower, and I'll try to find, we, we did look at some of this specifically. Hold on just one moment for me.
My apologies. Commissioner, I'm Kirsten Snowden. I'm Nathan's first assistant. We were sort of crowdsourcing the responses because we didn't have a lot of time, so this was one that I looked into. Some of it is, we do not track police officers separately from other witness, other lay witnesses, so there's not a category where we track, you know, whether or not somebody shows for a hearing or for grand jury, so to speak. But after a case is issued, we do track dismissal rates, and we can report that about 0.6% of 1%, so 0.6% of our criminal cases are dismissed for the failure of a witness to appear, not a victim, but a witness. So I can't tell you of that 0.6%, how many of those are police officers, but it's, stands to reason, it's not a significant percentage.
Thank you. I think that's something I'd be, I don't know that it's on you all to track either, but it's something that I'm interested in, because we seem to put, have a lot of conversation, at least in this body, about failure-to-appears, and I'm, don't, it would be nice to be able to contextualize it a little more, but again, I'm not sure that's y'all's responsibility to track. Do we have any sense of, and again, you, you all are not researchers, but is there any information we have on what is causing the failure-to-appear rate that was being discussed on, oh, you and me, DA? It was either Tuesday or Wednesday, I couldn't tell you.
Yes, it's close to 50%. And, well, it's, I suspect it's a combination of factors, really. We have folks in, that have severe substance abuse problems, and a lot of times, those substance abuse problems are spurring their criminal behavior, and we just don't have enough jail space and frankly, the, the support staff to, to staff the jail space that we have, and so, given the limited resources there, the jail is making difficult decisions about who to release, and a lot of times, those folks that are getting released are at very high risk to reoffend or are at high risk to use, and, and so they're just not complying with their pre-trial obligations. There is not a particularly robust pre-trial supervision program for a lot of those folks, and most importantly, the fact that a lot of those lower-level folks are being, you know, who are being charged with Class C felonies or, or Class A misdemeanors are not getting lawyers, they're really not getting any kind of supervision at that point. So when they have no supervision whatsoever, and then they're immediately released back into the community, we end up with a very high failure-to-appear rate.
I'm not sure that I agree with your, or the, at least the way it sounded, that failure-to-appear equals not being in jail, or that those things relate to each other. I would also say I've heard differently from the sheriff that it's more about staffing than it is about jail space, so I do think it's important for us to be thoughtful about language choice. With, we heard, and I'd heard this previously, but we heard last night during our budget public hearing as well, that public defenders are seeing about a 30% dismissal rate at court, which has often been due to evidence, at least stated... court, which has often been due to evidence, at least stated, evidence that may be found from our video cameras. Do you have any sense for how this can be improved so that we're saving both your time and public defender's time and it's not being dismissed so late in the process?
Yes, our, so the vast majority of our dismissal rate comes from cases that are dismissed as part of a global resolution, meaning that a criminal defendant has more than one criminal case. And so as a part of a plea bargain, we have a case that ends up getting dismissed. I do not think that it is accurate to say that the vast majority or even significant percentage of our dismissals are in any way tied to evidence that is produced in, in surveillance video or body worn camera footage. I can say though, that we don't have a specific percentage of cases available, a data set available for you for what number or percentage of cases were dismissed because of evidence that was discovered after charging or indictment. But with respect to video evidence and to the extent that there is presumably some percentage of cases for which that is true, that would be ameliorated with additional resources in our investigators because that is the significant burden on our investigative staff right now, which is obtaining and reviewing body worn camera, uh, video footage in advance of trial. And as soon as we, as possible in the process, it would be the best practice, of course.
Thank you. Last couple of questions. And again, some of these may be too lengthy to respond, so follow-up, written follow-up is fine. In your program offer 15100, it's Division One Administration, what are the outcomes for the misdemeanor cases offered by the specialty court diversion?
Commissioner, we're working on the response to this question, but I can tell you that there's an issue with how the information is presented in that program offer that came to our attention as a result of your question. So with the reorganization, there are less diversion programs under the purview of Division One for FY26 that there were in the prior years. So the numbers for 25 and 26 only reflect DUI diversion, which is the remaining diversion program under the purview of that division. So, you know, as you know, the program offer outcomes, when they, when they change, we should either indicate that in the description of the performance measure, or we should note that there has been a, a change, right, in the outcome data. So just know that we appreciate you catching that. Certainly an astute question and we'll provide a more detailed response about what was in before and what's remaining now. But my understanding from talking with our data manager is that the only remaining program is the DUI diversion program.
And just briefly to add to that as well, prospectively, you know, I've had a lot of great conversations with the defense bar, a little bit also with our partners at OJD, that looking at how do we bring back our community court structure, which provides a lot of that type of activities in the misdemeanor world. It's one that we saw some great successes with. We see a lot of individuals get good services and also get dismissals out of their cases. But, but it's one that we're, we're working on and, and trying to get everyone back to the table to get that, that program running again.
Thank you. That's another one I'd be really interested to support as that, and hear from you all as that progresses. I know how critical and vital those specialty courts can be. And I know we've tried many times to get a homeless court going, so that's still on my list for one day. So I will leave the next question on that for the follow-up based on just what you all talked about working on. And then the last thing I'll say, that again, maybe just coming and follow-up is, I'm interested to understand the salary changes over time. I'm struggling a little bit with the math of your overall budget and the number of FTE decreases that showed up in your presentation. So I would love to understand salaries of executive team and level four deputies from FY24, 25, and then to your FY26 proposed budget.
Commissioner, we're working on that and you'll definitely get a comprehensive response.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. That's all my questions for today, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Singleton. Commissioner Brim Edwards.
Actually, I was also just gonna ask a trailing question on that last question from Commissioner Singleton. Was there a significant shift in the salary schedule? I guess the salaries that you're operating on now and the previous years were both set by the previous district attorney?
Partially correct. So our office supports employees in two collective bargaining units, Local 88, which is our legal support staff, and the Multnomah County Prosecuting Attorneys Association. The both, you know, both of those agreements are up for bargaining here with the fiscal year starting July 1st. So you're right that those wage tables were set before this administration took office. The one exception is non-represented and elected staff, right? So there are a select number of staff assistants, the chief deputy district attorneys, the first assistant, that those don't have wage scales and they're at the discretion of the DA. I will say that generally, the way those salaries are placed is based on the compression that they see below them. So for example, our chief deputy DAs supervise senior deputy district attorneys. And so there's always been a look back in the district attorney's office when you're determining the appropriateness of those salary placements to look back at the folks that they're supervising and make sure there's enough space between them.
This is like the principals pay, or the teachers pay influencing principals pay. Just a normal compression. Okay.
Real quickly to add to that, you know, the, the salaries that were set for the chief deputies and the first assistant, they were either the same or actually a little bit less than the prior administration. So, so there was not add or bump up in that area.
Okay. So essentially established by the time you got in with a unknown about the outcome of the collective bargaining. So I, just a couple of questions, just go a little bit deeper as we had a pretty broad overview of department and your metrics. And I think I stated, I really appreciate the outcomes-based metrics that were, were shared versus just activities. And I also ask sort of what, what didn't get, what didn't get funded? And I'd like to just drill down on a couple of those places today. As we're also hearing from some community partners about some of the places that didn't get funded. And I guess the, maybe a logical place for me to start would be the Multnomah County Sheriff's sent us a letter about the elimination of the body worn cameras units, camera units, the three, three FTE and essentially that office saying eliminating it would, within the DA's office would create a system impacts and efficiencies that cover the whole different set of costs and that they would have ripple effects impacting the essential functions of public safety and police accountability. You had some pretty compelling information about just the, everybody's bringing body worn cameras on, online. Speak to, like, if those positions aren't filled, what, how, how do you triage that?
There's two major components and I think I have my chief investigator here to explain. There's the, what we call the, I guess, software component, and then there's the investigator component. And both of those are very critical to the operation. And I'll say before he goes into the details is that the, particularly when it comes to the software, if, if that is not funded, we'll have to pull that from somewhere else because we've learned it's such a critical piece of what we do. It's become kind of a core function of how we operate with the defense bar when it comes to discovery and all of that. I'll let investigator describe that.
Thank you, Commissioners. So with body worn camera, there, the, the two pieces we're talking about are the personnel, the three FTE that were funded, the one-time funding, and then the, the cost of software. When we, I think two years ago, we got the funding for that, we were ahead of the game in body worn camera unit programs because no prosecutor's offices or most of them were getting, building their, their program with the software ahead of the agencies in the county getting all the cameras. Most places were behind. So we were kind of at the forefront there. We were able to build that out to where we can share the, the video data, the photos, whatever digital evidence comes in can be immediately discovered back to defense attorneys for their review. And as Portland added all the cameras, we were ready for that and we're ready for the sheriff's office to come onboard. The software piece of it is so critical because we are virtually connected to all the agencies in the county. They can immediately share data with us, video, audio, all, all digital evidence, photographs, crime scene things with our office. That can be discovered immediately to defense attorneys. It can be shared and, and viewed by the prosecutors. It can be edited and redacted, which often has to happen very quickly during, during the day of trial sometimes. And we're just, other than Gresham who has Motorola, every agency uses Axon. So it's, it's really a best practice for us. And to Commissioner Singleton's question about, you know, the defense attorneys looking at body worn camera video, the fix to that, our hope is through the personnel who reviews the video early, we, we matrix it out on what they should be focusing on, is that those folks would identify cases where, let's say it's an assault of a police officer and that's the charge, that should be on video. And so the quick review might dictate to both the prosecutor and the defense attorney whether or not that's a sustainable charge. Perfect world, you know, that's what we want to do and that's what we've been focusing on. So the software, as, as the DA says, is pretty mission critical for us. It's hard to go away from it now because there aren't alternatives that are really viable. The personnel side, if we aren't able to fill those positions, we have to make some decisions about, do we pull from the other investigative bodies and fill those roles? Or do we limit our personnel time and reviewing video early on, which is going to lower the percentage of videos reviewed early, which is going to lower the likelihood that a prosecutor is going to see something to say, you know what, that charge doesn't really fit based on what the video shows right now. And as I mentioned in our presentation, it's a bit of a double cut to us because if we lose the positions in the body worn camera unit, the personnel that would actually be affected are their, our least senior investigators who happen to be sworn law enforcement and their backgrounds are career investigators. So we would lose the positions in body worn, but we would lose the personnel that are working on violent crimes, assigned to, you know, C, Unit D, things like that. So it hurts us twice. And that's the challenge with that funding going away.
Thank you. Then on the organized retail and auto theft task forces, did you say that you, you thought the cities has paid for a portion of that?
Yes, some of this was in part an agreement. And I know that our chief investigator knows a little bit about this and I'm sure Ms. Moda as well. But the, in that agreement, they were funding, I believe it's an investigative position as well that comes in and.
For the investigation side, the, when the city and the county set this up, I think two years ago, the county funding provided for two attorneys dedicated to auto and retail theft, the city would provide funding for two investigators assigned to auto and retail theft, I believe a legal assistant. You know, we are still talking with the city and we hope that those funds continue, but that was the agreement between the two was you, you pay for this, we'll pay for that. And it's been very effective.
So, so the five that you had in your $5 million ask, is that were part of the five FTE partially paid for by the city?
Not sure.
I'm seeing a, a shake and a not.
That is, that is correct, Commissioner. For the coming year, so the city had contributed about $350,000 was their portion. The county's was around $500,000. And Pete had it right that the way we attributed the FTE to those dollars available was that the county paid for the two DAs and then the city funding paid for the two investigators and the legal assistant. So it was five FTE for that program, those two programs, sorry.
And the city paid for a portion of it?
Correct.
While the city's actively engaged in their budget process, that might be a conversation we want to have with them.
And Commissioner?
Versus having them, us take over all?
Yeah, and, and that has been part of the conversations that we've been having with them.
Okay. Good to know. Just as I've said before, both of those, I think potentially have huge impacts on East Portland. This isn't around your FTE, but this is more just like a budgetary question. I think when Commissioner Singleton asked about the expungements, did you say it was 3,000 for January to April? So I'm curious, having talked to the previous district attorney about just the explosion of expungement cases, I'm assuming that came up, the 2021 law that created almost an automatic system, but not obviously automatic. Is that correct? I mean, there's just a huge, so this isn't a Multnomah, just a Multnomah County issue, it's a statewide issue where they're, which, which is a good thing because the reason why the legislation passed was to assist people be able to get housing, employment and a whole host of things without having to go through the very lengthy expungement process. So I'll let you answer it now, sorry.
I may have misunderstood the question, but if, if it's around sort of if the law change impacted the inflow of these cases, very much. There, we don't have automated expungement. In fact, those of us that work in this realm sort of cringe when we hear that word because we want it and it just is so hard to do because there's so many system partners involved, OSP and their fingerprinting process and other agencies. And then you have out-of-state convictions and everything gets really complicated when you start talking about automation in that space. But that's the, that's the gold standard, right? We'd love that to happen. But yes, the law changing has increased the inflow of expungement petitions a great deal.
So actually in my previous professional life?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, because I couldn't hear when you said, I couldn't hear the response when you said that they had said there was 3,000. I heard, I heard the team say there were over 3,000 motions, but not that there were over 3,000 expungements.
Sorry, I turned myself off. JIU has processed 3,155 motions to set aside conviction and those are expungements between January 1 and April 30th of this year. I guess you're, you're technically speaking correct. That's what we've processed. I don't know how many of those have gone through. And some of that depends on whether or not the petitioner was legally able to achieve it without the, without either us being in a posture where we have to object because their application violates the expungement law in one way or another, or the court cannot process it for one reason or another. So we can, we can look into that and get you a number of completed set asides if that's helpful.
Yeah, this is ultimately going to lead to a question about the budget. But I was involved in that effort to change the expungement law. Because at NIKE, a lot of the attorneys did pro bono work and they're like, even if you're an attorney, it's really hard to work through the process. So a simplification and Senator Prozansky, who we worked with on it, explained it as a, I think he would cringe when you say the word automatic too, because he's like, this is a multi-session, you know, effort to, it was very complicated. And so we did, took that first step. But as part of that, I think, so maybe it was widely successful in that things, thousands of cases are moving through, which is, was the intent, but there was no funding attached to that. I'm curious what, and this is again, maybe a future sort of legislative ask, what impact does that have on your, like, the workload of what types of attorneys in your office?
We have.
Non-attorneys.
Yeah, I would say it has a massive impact and we've been trying to be as creative as we can to deal with that. We brought in additional support that has been, and certainly my chief of staff would know the correct term, it's either out of budget or out of target. But we have, so we have some budgeted positions and some that we've brought in to try to help fill and, and meet that demand. We've, we've made strides, but I would say there's still a lot, just because I think in our presentation in the budget, you just saw there was just this massive increase inflow of that. And we've been working hard to. And we've been working hard to, you know, meet that demand with our employees.
Just as a follow-up, I'd be interested in sort of like, is that more administrative action or attorney actions? Or what that is, and again, this is for future, because I mean, it should be the ticket for people to have more access to employment and housing and a whole host of things, so.
Well, and so it's a combination. It's the easiest way to describe it and of course, it's probably a longer conversation. But you know, certainly there is, we get a lot of petitions in. Our staff members will try to filter those down to say, okay, here are the ones that we can quickly say, yes, those should be moved forward for a review. There are ones that maybe are, the application's deficient for one reason or another and that we may be requesting more information. The attorneys then will go through and review for, you know, statutory compliance, things of that nature. It's one that, my understanding is we didn't necessarily get a budgetary increase from the state. In other words, there weren't state funds that were put towards this. So it's been a burden that was, I'm going to call it, passed on to the county. And, and so the county certainly has assisted in some of that and some of that we've been trying to upstaff to meet that demand.
Great. Again, I'm not sure if people anticipated how wildly successful program would be or there would be a significant cost.
Commissioner, I'll just add that this probably warrants a further conversation about the work of the Justice Integrity Unit. I mean, the attorneys can certainly speak to this more eloquently than I can, but our office is responsible for a lot of things other than just moving the cases through the system, right? There's, there's all sorts of responsibilities and that work falls under the purview of JIU. So we can talk at a later time about what that unit does. But you're right that, you know, the cumulative effect of those changes starts to put an administrative burden on the office in a way that's hard to quantify at each incremental step. You only know a couple of years later when you've accumulated these various bodies of work that are requiring contributions of labor.
Thank you. We also heard from, we did receive a letter from Judge Oden Orr about the Start and Step Court. And just to clarify what that ask is, that is for a dedicated deputy DA versus right now it's more of an ad hoc basis or?
So, yes.
Tell me why that doesn't, why that doesn't work.
That's correct. So currently, or formerly, before we had the task unit, the way that Step Court and Start Court were staffed by our office was just sort of who is available to go that day. It was very inconsistent. We would try our very best to put someone in there for a several month span, but it almost never worked out because those attorneys were always carrying caseloads. So when your case goes to trial and you're going to be out for a week, you have to send in coverage because you're carrying an open caseload, you're also responsible for issuing cases. So there's a lot of sort of spread within that attorney's responsibilities. So it was literally who's available that day, who's not in court, who doesn't have trial, you're going to Start Court. And what that would create in the court was a variance of opinion, a relationship within the treatment team. You would have prosecutors who were unfamiliar with the clientele and didn't know that this behavior was kind of, that a particular thing that they said had been said two weeks before. There was nobody sort of offering that consistent, like, hold on a second, what's going on? And building a relationship with that participant. And frankly, I will say, having supervised treatment court positions, that is a great frustration of the court because consistency within that team.
Hence the letter.
Hence the letter. The notoriously neutral department of, you know, the judicial department has weighed in, which I think is notable here, because it is a great frustration of the court when you have kind of a model of accountability set up and then you keep interchanging a very important component. And somebody might go in there and be sort of more in a potted plant role after a while because they don't feel like they're empowered to have an opinion about what's going on because they've never met anybody else in the room. That's not what you want for a treatment court, that's not what you want for any treatment setting. So it's very, very beneficial to have a dedicated resource deputy. We are currently, we've pulled a line deputy, like a caseload carrying deputy to put into that position because it's that important to this office, because those programs cannot be as successful without that dedicated resource.
Is that true for the other specialty courts?
Absolutely. Well, I will also add, they require a certain level of specialization because we're, as somebody said, we're not statisticians, right? I think Commissioner Singleton said we're not statisticians, we're not treatment court personnel, we're not social workers, we're attorneys. So when we start learning these kind of specialties and these nuances of behavioral health and substance use disorder and stuff, it's very hard to transfer that body of knowledge from one person to another in a short period of time.
Great. And then, tell me a little more about the gun disposition investigator.
So gun dispossession investigator?
That's a new request.
Yeah, it was, what the position does is they directly partner with the sheriff's office and the civil unit on gun dispossession. So those are the folks that are out serving the restraining orders, the URPOs or red flag orders, stalking orders. And the people have to dispossess of firearms. Some of those people do it willingly, probably most of them do, some may not. Some are prohibited possessors, meaning they can't own a firearm anyway. The gun dispossession investigator is working directly with them on cases where there might be a criminal nexus, i.e. the person doesn't dispossess or continues to possess a firearm in violation of a court order or is a, perhaps a felon in possession of a firearm or some other reason they can't own guns. We also partner there with, closely with PBB on gun violence cases, felon in possession cases there, where those cases are coming to our office and need follow-up. And again, the law enforcement agencies struggle with personnel sometimes to do some of the follow-up needed for trial. This investigator is stepping into that role as well in making sure that all the evidence is ready for the attorneys and also is able to look at the influx of what are called fixed denials. So when someone goes to purchase a firearm from any licensed dealer, they're subject to a background check. If the background check, if they fail that, the state police notifies the DA's office of that attempted purchase of a firearm where they did not get one. This investigator is looking through all of those denials to determine why is this person who is prohibited trying to get a firearm? Some of those cases, we have open cases on where maybe there's a domestic violence victim that needs to be notified that their abuser is trying to buy a gun. Some of those cases are felons who are, for one reason or another, trying to go buy a gun and being denied legally. On average, annually, we are seeing about one denial per workday in Multnomah County. And there aren't really any investigators looking into that work. So this person's tasked with a lot of different things, all related to the, either the illegal possession of firearms or the attempted possession of firearms by people who are prohibited.
And then that work goes to somebody in the sheriff's office who goes to dispossess the gun?
The civil unit, the sheriff's office serves the dispossession orders. But they're civil, they're not doing criminal investigations. So that's where we sort of bridge the gap on our end.
Just one last question and I have some more, but pass it to Commissioner Moyer or whoever the chair wants to pass to. On the organized retail and auto theft task force, so. I didn't want to speak for the chair. I assumed that's who it was going to, and I was like, oh, that's not my role. Just back to the organized retail and auto theft task force. I know the initial data or the sort of ongoing data has shown that that has been very successful. And I'm wondering if, I'm noticing that it's like one, potentially one time only, is the theory that once you sort of get through the bubble and get maybe that some of the sort of free con flyers in that space, sort of out of that space, that you don't need the task force forever?
I don't, I don't think we agree with that. I think that when you.
Okay, I was just curious about the one time only or is that like, we have to be practical of?
I'm not an expert in why things are one timer ongoing, I don't know. But we don't, we don't agree that this is something that can be corrected with like a short time, a short-term investment. This, this county has seen sort of a degradation in the, the concept of accountability for crimes committed within retail spaces, frankly. And we've seen, more than any other county, these sort of smash and grab retail thefts that happen where, you know, a group of people will run in, take everything off of a rack that they can and run. They know that they won't be chased by loss and loss prevention officers. It's a rarity when they do, they also know the police are going to respond in slow time. We've been very successful in organized missions because we catch people kind of off guard. They're not expecting that level of enforcement. So when we really get everybody coordinated and organized and rowing the boat in the same direction, we can have a wonderful impact. But when we start kind of releasing pressure, it starts coming right back. And we've seen that in the places where we've, we've had missions over time and said, like Mall 205 is a wonderful example. We've had.
Right in my district.
Right in your district, right. So Easterner was doing missions at Mall 205 for a period of five weeks. They took four weeks off to focus on stolen vehicles and then they had to do five more weeks of organized retail theft. So it's sort of like where you kind of let up, the pressure builds again. So we think that this should be an ongoing investment within this county.
Okay.
And frankly, as the economy worsens, that becomes more prevalent.
I mean, just to speak to sort of the interconnected activity of the whole system. I mean, part of the problem, having been sort of on, on the other side with a entity that had retail operations is even if the loss prevention people stop them, that you still have to have the police come. And frankly, when there were high, very high levels of gun violence, coming to pick up somebody who had been stopped by a loss protection employee, you know, it could be like, we'll be there in four or five hours and, or maybe not at all, depending on what else was happening in the community with the lower levels of staffing. So it's just like, when there is less investment in any part of the system, it has impacts all throughout the system. So that's why some of my questions are interrelated. Thank you for answering those questions. I'll pass it back to the chair.
Yeah, and you guessed correctly. I will, I'm going to see if the one remaining commissioner, Commissioner Moyer, has any questions for the district attorneys.
Yeah, thank you. I want to ask for a little bit of clarity. I see a loss of one FTE in treatment court. And then I saw a moving of the DDA two from the mental health court to treatment court. And I'm trying to wrap my head around. So is that to fill the treatment court cut? Or is that and leaves mental health cut unsapped, or we like saying do it all?
Okay, we've made a deal. I'm going to talk budget mechanics and she's going to talk program mechanics.
Okay.
So you're right, there are moving parts. We knew that it was going to be hard for the board to consume the FTE changes with the reorganization, which is why at the backend, we put appendixes to try to crosswalk all the different position changes. So you're right, you're seeing one thing go away and you're seeing other things come in. So what we did was, we formed the treatment court unit by consolidating all of the treatment functions from across the office and moving the FTE from their respective unit to the treatment court unit. And we proposed for reduction, one FTE from that unit, the Start Court position. And so that's what you see going away. And I'll let Marielle speak to the program impacts.
I think you captured it very well, thank you. But basically, our mental health court position was previously in existence. It was actually housed in the org chart within the domestic violence unit, which didn't make a lot of sense for the, considering the work that was being done by that position. It's just sort of where it landed for different bureaucratic reasons. So when we consolidated all of the prison diversion courts and specialty courts in a one place, it moved. So that's why you see the creation of the Start Court position and the move of the previously existing mental health court position. And that in part, was in large part, was because putting all of those diversionary programs under one supervisor with kind of a consistent thread of training and programming, you just see better results.
And I'm curious about, from your perspective, what are the advantages of specialty courts? Like I think, you know, we're weighing where we, if we were going to buy things back or whatever. I, I, I don't know if you know this, I probably could ask the sheriff, but if somebody were not to have a specialty court option and they were to go through the traditional prosecution, what types of offenses and what type of time would we be looking at? And that for individuals, and I don't know if you know the cost, you may not. And then on the, you know, on the other side, like what are we asking DCJ to do on the specialty? I'm trying to kind of get a sense of that back and forth.
So it's important to kind of note the different levels of specialty courts. You know, you have everything from our Step Court to our Stop Court to our DUI intensive courts. And you know, there's, there's first the, I'm going to call it the, the community impact, which is, you know, these specialty courts really give us an opportunity to help individuals avoid going oftentimes to the Department of Corrections in the prison and allow us to do really intensive supervision by us, I mean DCJ, to do intensive supervision with that individual to, to really help them address their underlying issues that are bringing them into the criminal justice system. So it, these are where I would say you have the largest opportunity to see diversion away from prison into local treatment options. The loss of that certainly would translate to the idea of, you know, we're just not going to be able to staff to be able to do that work as much. It's, it's that one slide we had about, as the funnel gets more and more narrow when it comes to the district attorneys available, our ability to do that kind of very refined work and get folks into those specialty courts lessons and lessons. And so sadly, you know, we are then left with the alternative option, which was the statutory presumption of the Department of Corrections, which is what we're trying to avoid. You know, certainly each of those courts have been very, developed very intentionally with the Department of, with the DCJ, our local probation officers. And, you know, they are working hard to always like staff them, very particularly to the issues like, for example, the mental health court, right? We have, it's a very intentionally designed program to very focus on the individual needs of that, that person that's coming in before the court.
I'll also just add briefly, we work really in concert with DCJ. We were responsive with our eligibility criteria to their capacity to supervise. So we actually monitor very carefully that we're not overpopulating the courts when they're telling us that their caseloads are at capacity. We've seen that happen a couple of times in Step Court where we've had to expand and constrict eligibility to make sure that everyone is getting appropriate levels of supervision.
Yeah. And just, I don't have a lot of a criminal background knowledge. What is the, is there a recidivism or return to custody percentages for people who participate in a specialty court versus the traditional prosecution?
I would be happy to provide you specific numbers in follow-up. What I can tell you is that treatment courts, our treatment courts specifically, have better recidivism rates than conventional incarceration and conventional supervision. They do however, have sometimes increased jail usage because part of the sanctions are a two-day jail stay or three days. Where if you're on formal probation, you're not getting that small sanction, you're getting one big sanction when you do something wrong on your probation. So those numbers kind of skew it a little bit, but overall, in terms of substance use disorder intervention, extremely successful and very successful in crime prevention, future crime prevention. In fact, I think our Step Court has only seen two cases of new felony charges in the participants in the last two years it's been operational. I'll send those numbers happily to the commission.
On the body worn camera unit, today, what jurisdictions are using body worn cameras that fall under?
Portland Police Bureau, Gresham Police, Port of Portland Police Department, Oregon Health Sciences University and Portland State University. And certainly we have Oregon State Police from time to time in Portland, but they're not, they're not a large client, as it were.
not, they're not a large client, as it were. AMCSO did a pilot a couple of years ago, and then we absorbed that data, and then they pulled the pilot, and I think this year they'll be starting up their program. And all of those agencies also, they've shifted to like digital management. So no longer do we send an investigator to go pick up a thumb drive or a CD of photo, digital photos. We were able to send a link through Axon, they can upload the data right from their agency to us. Community members who have like Ring video, they can send video right to us. Loss prevention stores, everything's transferred digitally for the most part. There's still a few that are still using VCRs and things like that, but, you know, we're dealing with that.
And when you get that information for a case, are you getting the whole day of that officer? How does it come?
Sure. So we see arrest, post arrest, all the video, body worn camera video is submitted. If there's not an arrest, that video never gets sent to us. So the agencies maintain a lot more data than we do. But where we see volumes is you have a, let's say, an armed robbery and a foot chase and a perimeter and then an arrest, every single officer at the scene, all of their video from that entire incident is part of that package. So the more officers on scene, the more hours of video we see per incident. I think we're, I can get you the exact numbers, but I think like per case is several hours of video per case. And the digital evidence, the other digital evidence, of course, is separate from that. But that's, it's been fairly steady over the past few years. As the number of cameras have increased, the overall hours per case hasn't gone up dramatically. And I guess I mentioned on Tuesday, now that the sheriff's office is adopting the program, we expect this steep rise we've seen in the past two years will plateau because there aren't any other agencies in the county. So we feel good going forward that we'll know sort of the numbers after they adopt their program.
And when we have video and must disclose to the defense, are they given that same, whatever we get, we give to them?
They are getting everything that we have, and sometimes we have to go back to the agencies to get more video. And it's not, and my sense is there's no intent to deprive us of all the video. It's simply that the way the video comes in, sometimes we have to go back and make sure, did we get everything from you? Or let's say, three agencies were on the scene, we have to make sure we got it from all the agencies. But that's disclosed to defense as near to immediately as we can do it.
I will also just add, as a practitioner, I'm sure you can imagine how grateful both sides are when we have the benefit of an investigator having watched and saying, hey, from 6:30 to 6:37, the officer's sitting in his car typing in his computer. So it's not relevant portions of video that are like directly statements from the defendant or the witness interviews. There's a lot of standing around at crime scenes, that's all captured on body camera. So sometimes I've reviewed cases for trial that have close to two hours of just time of walking, no talking, nothing related to the case. And it's been very helpful to have the investigator support to say like, these are the timestamps that are relevant to your case.
And Commissioner, I'll just, I'll add that this was sort of the spirit behind the portion of our presentation that focused on how the work has changed. Because when I was a legal assistant in the district attorney's office in 2008, when a custody case would come in, low-level misdemeanor, it would oftentimes be a front and back police report. That's it. Two pages custody report. Now, when that case comes in, you may have six hours of body cam footage. And that's really important in terms of public trust, accountability for our police agency partners, doing the right thing in terms of moving cases along where there's sufficient evidence, and it comes with a system cost.
Those are my questions.
Hey, thank you. So I have a few questions, which were sent, so hopefully they're not surprises. So one of the conversations that I had with your predecessors, you know, the last two were around the challenge of prosecuting cases without the, without the, a sufficient level of investigation to build the cases. And that the reductions in the Portland Police Bureau and other law enforcement agencies was having impact on your ability to do that. And because of that, the ask to the Board of County Commissioners was to add more investigators to the DA's office to make up for the lack of investigators in law enforcement agencies. So I want to talk a little bit about what, what the trend of that is. And, you know, we're hearing from the mayor and others that they're investing more in the police bureau. So I want to talk a little bit about what that trend has been and what it looks like for this year and moving forward.
Excellent question, and it gives a good historical context around this. And what, there's a, there's a positive and. So the positive is certainly there's a focus on this issue of trying to build capacity with our law enforcement partners. And certainly, Mayor Wilson has been out front advocate for that. The and part is that Portland Police seems to still be kind of plateaued or steady in that area of where they've been. And Chief Investigator Simpson may know a little bit more about this, but their retirement rate and their hire rate still has not allowed them to come into that level where we see them able to take care of their call load. You know, they still have days where they have 60 calls holding, and they still have these issues where they're not able to fully staff shifts. And this is what is greatly impacting their ability to do a lot of that follow-up work and the type of things that our investigators are handling, is that that's something we still see prevalent. And, you know, when I'm out with officers, I still continue to look over at their, their screen, and I just see this just unreal list of calls that are holding. And it is, it's still, I would say, I try to be very hopeful, but we're still not there, is what I'm seeing.
Yeah, and I can say, there's, I don't want to call them two trends, but two things that we kind of look at is the, the quality of the investigation that gets to our office and the attorney's review for charging decisions. That in the, in the rise of police need for services, police reports taking crimes, and the reduction of staffing in our other partners, their time dedicated to each case is less. So they may be doing enough to, you know, make an arrest, to get some basic information, but that, that more investigative lean-in, they're not able to do. That then comes to our office, and the request comes to both our investigators and sometimes back to the agencies. It just depends on the type of case. But we have seen a need for greater investigation post-arrest probably than in years past. Even with a perfect case, it requires some follow-up. And sometimes it's finding the witnesses and reviewing jail calls or re-contacting somebody for a follow-up interview. And, you know, we have tried to be very thoughtful in our approach of these law enforcement agencies, it starts with them. We'd like them to complete it and get it packaged up nicely before it comes to the DA's office, but accepting the reality that that isn't always going to happen. And because of resource constraints everywhere, we have to be thoughtful too. And so the last thing we want to be in a position as an office is for a prosecutor to tell a victim, we can't move forward on the case because this follow-up needs to be done and nobody's doing it. So we really try to be thoughtful about that, and our investigators do an exceptional job of trying to fill that role. And we're trying to work with the law enforcement agencies to help bolster their capacity to fill that role too at the front end because it saves everybody time.
And, you know, from, from the practitioner perspective, I will say, we don't want to pull a patrol officer off of a 911 call to ask him to go pick up video from a store that was, that was shoplifted from two weeks before. We don't want to call an officer in for four hours of overtime when we can send one of our investigators out to get something done in 30 minutes. These, it's not only just the logistical simplicity of not requiring our emergency responders to do follow-up on low-level cases, it's also creating a low barrier point of entry for people that don't necessarily feel comfortable interacting with uniformed officers. So often, we have situations where someone wants to report or wants to give more detail but feels really uncomfortable being seen talking to a uniformed officer. Our investigators in plain clothes with law enforcement background and experience conduct beautiful interviews with very like meet people where they're at mentality. And that has been essential to our ability to kind of bolster these cases that the victim or the witnesses wouldn't have otherwise had this opportunity because of their kind of systemic barriers and fears. And we've been able to fill a gap by providing less formalized contact with our office.
Thank you, I appreciate the answer. I mean, I know, you know, I mean, not all officers wear uniforms, right? You have detectives, you have others who don't. And they're, you know, we are all in a constraint budget environment, and the fact that we at the county now are taking on something that used to be just an expected, you know, part of the job for law enforcement agencies is something that I think this board has to consider. Thank you. So I wanted to talk a little bit about, we've been talking about auto theft and auto theft prosecutions. I'm just curious, there was a legislative change, and I think it was in 2017, that around, a change in law that, that made it much easier to actually arrest and prosecute somebody for auto theft? Can you talk a little bit about that and the impact that that's had over the last several years?
Yeah, so you might, I think that change was in 2020.
Okay.
And it was, it was around the knowing component of when you can arrest somebody for being in a stolen car. Because the way that the law was previously written, you had to establish a certain level of knowledge within the person that was actually very difficult unless the person said, I know this car is stolen. But, you know, you'd walk up, an officer would walk up and see a car with a screwdriver stuck in the ignition, and the person would be sitting there and they'd try to engage them in conversation. And the case law around that for us was very problematic and difficult. So that law change actually enabled our ability to prosecute more stolen car cases. It has, the auto theft task force has been sort of a, has had a separate role. It hasn't been just an uptick in overall prosecutions of stolen vehicles. That absolutely did make our lives a little bit easier in terms of charging. But the auto theft task force has really been able to focus more on sort of the repeat offenders and the offenses that's, that profit from the stolen cars. And we also had the catalytic converter kind of law change that didn't necessarily impact stolen cars because people were often just getting their cap taken out of their car and the car was left there and then it just didn't work the next day. But that has also had kind of a visible impact in the reporting of auto vehicle theft as well.
Does the auto theft task force deal with sort of the less than the whole car thefts? Like the--
So the auto theft, excuse me, the auto theft task force deals with, uses kind of strategic prosecution principles to identify people that are stealing more cars. It's very rare that our prosecutor handles a one-off stolen car case. These are long-term investigations where we see trends of like, for example, 2015 Kias being stolen from the airport. And you're like, what is happening up there? And then you focus the resources and the investigative thrust is around that particular problem. So it's, we prosecute lots of regular, everyday stolen car cases. Auto theft is a little bit more sophisticated in its ability to drill down and look for these larger, complex investigations where we're like, where are these cars going? Who's selling them? Like, who's driving the market of stolen cars? Because we know they're not all just being lived in or driven around, they're going somewhere.
Yeah, I guess, I think my question was a little bit different. It was a little bit on, when you talked about the catalytic converters, because like when I was out at Fubon Shopping Center, there were like people going in to go shopping and come out, and their catalytic converters were being stolen. I had all four of my wheels and tires stolen off my car in front of my house. Like, I mean, so these sort of, it's high-volume parts. There was the Lakos Wigo catalytic converter.
Yeah, they're not the--
I'm curious about whether that's some part, because that's, I mean, you don't have, you don't have wheels, it's almost as bad as your car being stolen.
There is some crossover there. I can think of a case, the investigation led to a couple of locations earlier this year where the person was stealing vehicles and immediately stripping all the parts off the vehicle, putting them into other vehicles, and then selling those vehicles to sometimes unsuspecting buyers who don't know they're buying a car with a stolen engine because the VIN on the car comes back legitimate or the doors are stolen or whatever. So there is some crossover there with parts that--
The task force.
That's through the auto theft task force, yeah. And, and they're just, the whole world around a vehicle, not specifically to just a part, but more all of the parts that get stripped away and scattered to the wind.
But I think when we're talking about this idea of what happens when someone, used to be more common, would smash out a window and steal the car stereo, right? The auto theft task force doesn't necessarily dig down to that level. There are some precinct level detectives that, you know, with our strategic prosecution unit, we, when we try to identify, hey, this is a particularly bad area, or there's a, you know, so maybe someone that's been identified as heavy into catalytic converter theft, then we'll, we'll work with those precinct level detectives to try to, to address that. Formerly, we have property crimes units within Portland Police that doesn't currently exist.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, I have a couple more questions. So I, one thing I've asked our county budget office to help me remember is just the, the timeline of when things were initiated, and especially those where we're using art funding or we've had other pockets of one-time only. Christian reminded me yesterday that we had a whole process with some one-time BIT business income tax dollars that, so I just wanted to give you a heads up that I'm gonna, that I've asked for that, and she may be reaching out to you or has already done that. And that's not just for your, not just for the DA's office, but I think just getting that historical view for the, especially with the new board. I'm just, I'm curious about the impacts, you know, or maybe, and this is more for you, DA Vasco, is just looking at the, the impacts of COVID, the public defenders, like on the timeline and the kind of workload for your office and what that looks like, you know, this year, the next budget year that we're talking about, and then into the future.
Yeah, we look at those both, kind of break them out. So when we're talking about COVID, what we're seeing is an increase in cases as we come out of COVID. You know, it's, I think the numbers have been between 20% to 30% increase in cases, mix of felonies and misdemeanors. But that has been, you know, when we look at the, just the basic line graphs, that's what we're seeing. So that workload is becoming, you know, more and more impacting my, the everyday deputy DA. And there's the backlog of cases from COVID. So it's that kind of double component. We're seeing caseloads that, and that was that unit A, B graph, that are much higher right now because of that, what I'm going to call the lasting effects of COVID. When we start looking at the defense attorney issue, this is one that's, it's interesting because it really, it causes a lot of additional work. Because we'll have these cases where we do that front-end work on the case, we get it all ready to go, it goes over to the court for arraignment, it doesn't get an attorney, it will, the DA will monitor it as it kind of bounces around. And then we've had to go back through and spend a significant amount of time trying to reissue cases. So it's, it's a very unfortunate byproduct of this problem, which I always focus on the loss of justice for victims, the defendants that have needs that aren't being met. Those are certainly the primary focuses. However, on top of that, we also see kind of duplicative or, you know, additional work on the DA's. You know, myself and all the chief deputies and the property crime deputies, we got together and tried to filter that way down, but it still creates that increased workload. So we're at this space right now where it's kind of a post-COVID defense attorney crisis bubble that we're trying to, to work through and be as creative as we can in a lot of different ways to reduce that down.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all of you coming back to answer these questions. And I think there were a couple out there that Commissioner had said, you're welcome to reply back in writing. So thank you all very much today. That is our scheduled agenda. We, since we're early on in hearing from the departments, so thank you all for that. And unless there's anything else, we can wrap up a little bit early today.
What about the budget amendment?
Oh, did you want to, oh, thank you. Did you want to speak to that? Thanks for the reminder.
But fortunately, it's unrelated to you all.
Yes.
We'll leave you to your afternoon.
And the room did get a little bit cooler, but you're welcome to go to an even cooler place than this.
Thank you all. We really do appreciate the opportunity for the conversation.
Thank you.
Is that slightly cooler though? Maybe. Yeah.
There's something that's malfunctioning. We got an update that there's something malfunctioning and they're working on it.
Yeah. We still just don't want to stay any longer than we have to.
So thanks for adding this as, just as a potential topic for discussion if anybody had any feedback about the sort of, the proposal that Commissioner Jones-Dixon and I sort of brought forward about how we might-- of brought forward about how we might work through the amendment process. I don't know if anybody has any questions or...
I had too many, too many tabs open, it took me a minute. I did have something, I wasn't able to really participate the other day, but I did have a couple of things on this. I think, one, thank you for doing the work and having the conversation and moving something forward. I think for me, a lot of this is in line with what just is good practice, so I will say I was assuming this is how we were operating. I wasn't aware that some of this wasn't how we've operated in the past. I do feel pretty strongly that it's the board's responsibility to offer a balanced budget, and so I do have concerns about us putting forward amendments without doing the work to identify offsetting cuts and leaving that. I appreciate the idea that we could get recommendations and support, and I absolutely will be leaving, leaning on both departments and the budget office, but I'm, the way it's currently written in this proposal of with or without the offsetting proposed budget adds, I'm not, I don't really support us not doing that work as commissioners.
Yeah, maybe I could speak to that, because I had a problem typing that. And yet, it is a little bit of different variation, because many of the things in there are like, yeah, this is just like our regular practice. I do know, and I'm gonna sort of share my experience last year. So I had a fair number of amendments, and because I had staff who'd been here a long time with a previous commissioner, they're like, wait, you gotta pay for it. So, you know, I went through it and found something that I felt from a prioritization that I wanted to pay for it. What I found sometimes was that other people, including staff, had, you know, here's a different way to approach this, or here's a different pot of money, which was usually helpful. Sometimes it was like, you have no idea what you're taking out of, out of that program and how this will impact it. So, you know, here's maybe a different approach. So I was trying to leave it open to that, so that instead of having staff trying to guess what's in our, you know, what we're looking at, or things we're doing, it's like, okay, I'm interested in funding, or restoring funding for X, or, you know, a half of FTE, and I'm thinking about using this as the offset. I guess I, from my perspective, I wanted to give staff permission to, and we kind of talked about the word whether, not, because at first it was the word advice, which I know staff doesn't want to be in the position of giving, like, necessarily advice, but like guidance, like this might be something you should think about before you put this particular offset on the table. So that was the thinking, it wasn't, I say, I tried to keep the language soft, so that, like, you know, maybe it's 90% of the budget amendments that get put on the table are like the traditional ways. Somebody puts something down, they put an offset, and, you know, the chips just fall where they may for whoever, whatever the offset is. But I, like, I guess, I think there's a lot of wisdom, and I'm saying this as somebody who's new, there's a lot of wisdom in the larger organization of, like, this may be a different way to do it. I mean, I found that, that last year on the Hanson Building, so that, that was kind of the thinking, and so I tried to make it as, that wasn't the dominant one, but that not to also preclude the possibility.
I definitely appreciate that, and that's helpful. I think that's where maybe, so I will just say, as a former department director, I didn't appreciate when amendments would come without any knowledge, and they would just show up at a board meeting or a budget work session, when I didn't have the ability to say, this is how it will or won't impact. Maybe that isn't practice, is to share that and have those conversations, but that's how I've been approaching amendments. So I think I've been doing that work on the front end, as opposed to after introducing an amendment, and maybe it's an order of business that we can agree to. And it may make sense for me to just try and take a crack at some track change edits to your proposal, if that makes sense for a next step.
Yeah, I think I would, I would welcome that. Like I say, it was more, the other thing, there's sort of, what I found going through the process, and also just speaking from my 12 years of going through the public schools' budget process, is sometimes when somebody doesn't actually put an amendment on, but talks about, like, I'm interested in, which I think we kind of heard, for example, on school-based mental health, like, there was like, kind of a consensus, people like, we're interested in adding it back. And that's kind of good to know, so it's not like, I'm just gonna put something out there and then see if there are four people who agree, but just sort of sharing, like, I'm, I'm thinking about doing an amendment related to, say, restaurant fees, in order to buy it down, or to restore the school-based mental health. And then, without a, and like, and here's a specific proposal, how to pay for it, because then, again, what I was trying to elicit is, like, removing this mystery process that happens behind closed doors, if all of a sudden it pops out, and here are the approved amendments, and everyone's like, oh, how'd that, how'd that happen? So that's what else I was trying to sort of get after, sort of surfacing where there might be places where there, there might be sort of add-back, you know, a number of people wanting to add something back, and also kind of the same thing about, you know, the pay, the pay-for's versus just having, like, it happens, you know, in some staff meeting or something, where you, all of a sudden, it's a complete surprise that, like, hey, you just lost some staff, or you just gained some, and none of that was out kind of, or hadn't marinated in the public space.
And, and I just want to add, like, I do think, having been through this process many years, I do think there's a difference between what, what we've heard a little bit so far already, is that, like, I am, I'm, you know, I'm gonna be looking at school-based mental health and bringing something forward, or something like, versus like the official bringing forward the amendment, where, like, it's written on the board, or there's something on paper. And I think there's, and so Commissioner Berman Edwards, like, correct me if this isn't what you were thinking, but, like, if you're bringing forward, like, the idea or the concept, you don't necessarily need the revenue stream at that point, but when we are ready with the kind of paper, you know, the, thanks to the template Christian made, like, that, at that point, there should be a dedicated revenue stream identified.
So...
Or is that not what you were...
Yes, and, so what, I also don't think commissioners should get caught in a gotcha with, like, you put that on the table, and, you know, you didn't ask us, or we had, we didn't get a chance to weigh in and tell you a different way to do it. So, like I say, I think it's a fine, there's a fine line of whether it is, like, I like people to tell me before I mistake a mistake, or like, to inform me if they know something more, that there's a better way to do it. And, I mean, you, you could put something on the, like, the definite pay-for, and then have the discussion in public, but sometimes it's better to do. So I was trying to figure out a way to elicit that, of like, hey, if I picked the wrong pay-for, because that's the linchpin of, you know, a whole other body of work that I had no idea, because it didn't look like it when I went through the, the program offers. I'd rather know that in advance and have it informed, and maybe I'm not gonna follow the advice, but at least I'm informed, and I know that, I'm informed with what I'm proposing to cut. I think we should, I definitely would welcome track changes suggestions or other ways to do it, because it's more to sort of start the discussion before we got into laying down other amendments.
Absolutely. I'll get something back together, and then maybe we can talk about it again at one of our, our work sessions next week, too.
Great. I mean, I'll just, an example, like, when you said the other night, I had in my list something related to employment, sort of the workforce issues, that reductions that have happened, and when you said, like, I'm gonna do something, it's like, okay, I'm gonna spend my sort of brain power on a couple of things, because I know you're gonna be bringing something forward that I could react to, so I don't need to be doing that as well. So again, I think it also sort of fosters more sort of an ability to sort of bring knowledge together and distribute leadership around across things where there might be more than one person who's interested in doing something, so. I'm interested in that issue, too. So I'd love to talk about it. I don't, I don't know, I don't need to write the amendment, but I'm interested in that. I, in general, am pretty flexible, I'm about exactly how we did this, so I'm, but I like the proposal. I think it's helpful to have a known process, the daylights it. You know, I would prefer, I wouldn't put it in a rule, but I'd prefer if we try to get as much of this stuff put forward, it doesn't have to be perfect, it can be tweaked and changed as we learn more, but I think because there may be competing amendments, things that need to get worked out, complexity, the earlier, the better, it'd be really nice not to wait until the day before, because I think I at least would like to be able to look at it in its totality, as well as on an individual proposal level. And it's hard if we don't have them all to look at and a little time.
Yeah, and I will just reiterate, and I was looking to my calendar, but I, my calendar is crazy, so when is the revenue forecast happening? The date? What? The 28th. So I also think, you know, when we get the updated revenue forecast, that's also gonna, you know, just like the state ones came out, that came out yesterday, was the, you know, is the, the barometer that the state is using for their final budgets. Ours is gonna be coming out on the 28th, and I think that is also gonna help provide us all the perspective on what is needed, or, or the work that we have in front of us to get to a vote on January 12th, based on what that looks like. For me, though, the, I, I really appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner Moyer, because I think that as we're thinking, like, you know, even if we're trying to bring out ideas early, there may be things where there are similar amendments, or, or people are working on the same thing, and we just, and we may not know that. We have the TSCC meeting on the morning of January 4th, and then we have a budget work session that afternoon. And I would, it would be great if we could agree, you know, informally, like, to have budget amendments, all budget amendments brought forward, so then we can have those conversations, because we have additional budget work sessions later that week and early the next week, really have that conversation about what the, what ultimately we're, we're gonna move forward to. And, and everybody has a chance, I think, then to see budget amendments, hear the budget notes that are being proposed, and think about, you know, what that, what that means in terms of our overall budget. So that's a date that I'm putting out there, just, you know, just as a, as a kind of ideal date to, to aim for.
So what?
I, I think you mean June, though, right, Chair?
Well, I keep saying, do I keep saying May?
You, no, this time you said January.
Oh, gosh, okay. I don't know why I have such a hard time with June. Yesterday it was May, today it's January. Yes, June 4th, I almost said it again. Yeah, just June 4th. And again, like, not to say that, like, there might not be fine-tuning, or like, two amendments might become one, or whatever, but, but at least then, that way we'll, we'll have them publicly, and then we can be able to do that work in our remaining work sessions leading up to the vote the next week.
Well, this is a little bit why getting staff guidance, and I don't want to say recommendations or priorities, because we're the deciders, but like, informed by, sort of earlier rather than later, is, I find usually the resistance isn't to what you're restoring or paying for, it's usually the pay-for. And so, so sometimes, like, the resistance to the pay-for, it's like, oh, I'm all for doing that, except for I don't like the pay-for, and then, then you're getting new concepts in, relatively late. And that's, I think, what I'm trying to, like, advance earlier into the process. And, you know, in some ways, this time around, and I don't, I don't want to imply that any of the constraint cuts were easy, so I'm not saying that at all, but there has been some prioritization that happened by departments that exist that weren't all taken. And so from my perspective, a natural thing for a commissioner would be to do is, like, these were lower on the priority list, not that they're not important, but lower on the priority list than things that they actually put in, in the budget. So to me, like, that might be a place to go, to go look for things. And I'd want staff to wave me off if they're like, no, that actually was on the list, but, you know, here's some context that you should know about. That's what I'm trying to get after, again, getting more earlier discussion on the, on the pay-for's versus the restoration.
And, and that's great. I, I don't want to imply by any means that people have to wait till June 4th, I'm just saying that if we can agree that that would be the latest time, you know, and like I said, that doesn't mean that there won't be work done on the concepts, or the amendments, or the notes that are brought forward to finalize them, and like, I think that's, that's, you know, healthy and what should be happening, but just, I, and I'm thinking back to last year and previous years, when amendments and notes were coming in the night before or the morning of, and how frustrating that is as a commissioner who wants to make an informed vote to do that with a lot of information coming at the last minute. And that's what I'd like to avoid for this board with this budget process.
Actually, I think last year, most of the, even amendments that, like, looked slightly different from they were, they were, components had been put on the table and maybe reorganized, or like, I'm only doing half the, half the cut, or I'm only doing half the restoration, or I'm doing two of the cuts that I had over here, but to offset something else. So I don't, but again, getting those all at table, so there's not a last minute, like, you weren't, you didn't come to the meeting that day and something got cut.
Okay, well, thank you all for the conversation. I, I know that Commissioner Jones-Dixon is not able to be here today, and I'm, you know, I know, I'm sure he'll have things that he'll want to add to that conversation. So Commissioner Singleton, I appreciate your suggestion that we can, we can continue this and kind of maybe come to an agreement of some sort next week in one of the work sessions. Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, for, for the time today. That concludes today's budget work session. There be no further business, we are adjourned.